It is six o'clock, everyone. So I will call the regular meeting of the Milpitas City Council. Hello, everyone. It's six o'clock. I will call the regular meeting of the City, Milpitas City Council to order on the September 2nd, 2025. This meeting is being broadcast via Zoom. The City Council meeting is available for instant translation in over 60 languages with wordly. It's accessible via mobile phone, computer, and video displays. So by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner, you can see it. City Clerk Guzzetta, please take the roll call.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Present.
Councilmember Chua.
Here.
Councilmember Lam.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leanne.
Here.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm here. All right. So I guess I'd be, I thought that maybe the city attorney reads this? Or do you want me to? Okay.
I, I can.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, Councilmember Chua is appearing remotely. She is requesting remote appearance pursuant to AB 2449. Councilmember Chua requires remote participation pursuant to Government Code Section 54953F2, F2A2 for a temporary communicable illness. Councilmember Chua, after asking at this time, is anyone in the room with you who's over the age of 18?
No one.
The, to approve a request to appear remotely under AB 2449, we need a motion and a second and a majority vote of the City Council. Approving the request to appear remotely also means that we'd have to approve remote public comment for tonight.
That it? Okay. Is there a motion or is there a second? And we have, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve Councilmember Chua's request to appear electronically at this meeting.
And I second that. Okay, let's call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Right.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. All right. And so now we will be adjourning to closed session. Is, do I need to have the city attorney say anything else about that?
Thank you, Mayor. You have two items for closed session tonight. The first is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency's designated representative is Rick Belanos of Lieber, Cassidy, and Whitmore. The employee organizations are Protech, Midcon, MEA, and Unrepresented Employees. The second item is conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section Existing litigation, Stephen Fox versus the City of Milpitas, WCAB case number ADJ 18132318.
Okay, thank you very much. And so now we will close for, go to closed session and we will...
Mayor, we need to call for public comment first.
Public comment? Anyone in the public?
I have no public speaker cards and I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so now we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Okay.
I turned up the fan in the... Going upstairs to go have lunch.
Okay, it is 7:20. Meeting is now called to order. So this evening, the colors will be presented and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Scout Troop-
Mayor, I do need a report out on closed session.
Oh, that's right. Go ahead.
And the report out is there's nothing to report out at this time. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. So again, Troop 0164 Community Christ- Christ Community Church of Milpitas will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance and again, it's Troop 0164 Christ Community Church in Milpitas. Welcome.
Color Guard detention. Color Guard advance. Color Guards, prepare to post the colors. Color Guards, post the colors. Color Guards, honor your colors. Two.
Color Guards, honor your colors. Two. Color Guards, dismissed. Audience, you may be seated.
Thank you very, very much. Okay. All right, so now we have, this is a moment for invocation. And today, we have Councilmember Leanne. She will provide the invocation.
Mike? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Let's take a moment to ground ourselves in kindness and caring. May we approach this time together with our open minds, thoughtful words, and caring hearts. Let each conversation reflect respect. Each action reflect compassion. And each decision move us closer rather than further. To a more supportive and connected community. Let's lead with empathy, listen with intention, and lead with kindness. May our words carry hope, our actions show care, and our presence remind others they are not alone. In lifting awareness, we help carry the weight. In offering empathy, we build connection. And reminding every person that their life matters. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Leanne. And now it is time for presentations. So I will be going down to the podium and I will invite councilmembers to come and join me. Thank you. Okay, are you ready? All right, so the first one I have will be National IT Professionals Day Proclamation. Again, so today, we honor the vital contributions of information technology professionals who keep our digital world secure, reliable, and innovative. Here in Milpitas, our IT management and staff work, they work tirelessly to ensure transparency, cybersecurity, and uninterrupted services for our community. We also recognize the Science, Technology, and Innovation Commission for its guidance on technology, policy, and services that benefit our residents. Their expertise strengthens our city and safeguards our future. So join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Milpita City Council in recognizing September 16th, 2025 as National IT Professional State. All right. And I want, would like for you to say a few words. The Commission, come on up. Stations. We want you to say something.
Sure, two words, yeah. Why not? By the time Mayor is shaking hand with everybody, just want to say a few words. Honorable Mayor Montano, members of the City Council, and the city staff. Thank you for this honor, Mayor. I accept this with gratitude, not just for myself but for all who supported me throughout. Mr. Daniel Damm and his IT staff, Commissioner Gandhi, my wife, Nita, my son, Akshay, everybody. This is, this is a combined effort and everybody worked together. And I really appreciate you recognizing us. This recognition reflects the spirit of the community that makes our special, you know, ourselves special. Thank you again, everyone, and appreciate it. Yeah, sure, yeah.
Let's put the, let's put this commendation. Hold it up.
Thank you.
I think there's one more.
Oh.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, the world has really changed and it's still changing with all this technology. Okay, so now, moving on to National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. So each September, we join communities across the nation to raise awareness about suicide prevention, reduce stigma, and offer hope. This year's message, "Start a Conversation, Be the Difference," reminds us that by asking how someone is truly doing and listening with compassion, each of us can make a difference. Because sometimes, you know, the outside, you don't really know what's happening in the inside, you know? So sometimes it's really good just to ask, hey, how are you doing today? What's going on? So again, help exists by healing, and it's possible, and no one has to feel, to face this alone. So join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Milpita City Council in recognizing September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And we have, who is going to come and receive this today? Is there anyone else? Oh, come on up. It's a pretty long proclamation, but I don't think you want to hear it. This is you, and I want you to speak. Say something.
Mayor Montano, councilmembers, we, on behalf of the Veterans Support Group, Carla, our city liaison, and LaShaw, my co-facilitator from the VA. We really appreciate this and not only do, it's important because as you say, veterans sometimes don't speak and tell what's, what the problem is. And how the city of Milpitas really makes the space for veterans to recognize them in so many ways. But the Veterans Support Group has helped people get connected and even, might have even saved a life. So thank you so much. We can't wait to show this to the Veterans Support Group. Thank you for all, for everything.
All right, thank you very much. You know, on the veterans, I was the liaison to the Veterans Commission and, and Leanne was really, Ms. Ramos was really instrumental in getting a lot of people to, a lot of veterans, giving them the help that they need. Okay, so now we're moving on to National Preparedness Month. So this proclamation will be accepted by Fire Chief Schoonover and Emergency Management Coordinator, Tony Shartup. So preparedness saves lives. Each September, we remind our community of the importance of being ready for disasters, whether natural or man-made. This year's theme, lasting legacy. The life you've built is worth protecting. So this theme highlights the responsibility we all share to protect our families, our homes, and our community. By making a plan, building a kit, and learning about local risk, we strengthen resilience for generations to come. So join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Milpita City Council in recognizing September 2025 as National Preparedness Month. And we have Chief, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. Jason Schoonover, serving as your fire chief. September marks National Preparedness Month and an opportunity to recognize all of the hard work that occurs behind the scenes within the city. From the community members who dedicate their time serving on the Public Safety Commission to our invaluable CERT team members, along with the other city departments such as the Police Department, 911 dispatchers, Public Works, and the incredible support for public safety from our city council. Emergency preparedness is a team effort in the city of Milpitas, and we've assembled a fantastic team. As you mentioned, Mayor, this year's National Preparedness Month theme is Preparedness Starts at Home. We are asking people to take four key actions to prepare for any disaster they may face, which include know the difference, different types of emergencies that could happen, and appropriate responses to stay safe, make a family emergency plan, build an emergency supply kit, and get involved in their community by taking action to prepare for emergencies. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our City Emergency Management Coordinator, Tony Charlotte.
Thank you, Council, for the proclamation. National Preparedness Month provides us an opportunity to announce the city's new alert and warning system called Genesis Protect. This new system is very simple. First, you'll download the free app from the App Store, look up your location, and make a note of your zone number. So for example, Milpita City Hall sits in MLP Zone 029. Once you've identified your zone, save your location and make sure your alerts are turned on and notifications are turned on so that you would receive warning. Lastly, you can add up to 10 locations to receive fire, emergency, and police alerts and instructions in a disaster as to what to follow. I've left flyers in the back in the room next to the agendas, and they have the QR code that you can provide to, to take a picture and download that. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for all those safety guidelines. And a matter of fact, William, Lem, and myself will be in that training, the CERT training. We already were on there, but we need to renew it. So thank you, everyone. Thank you. So now, let's move on to the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. So public forum will be limited to two minutes. So City Clerk, do you have any speakers?
I have one public speaker card for Voltaire Monta-Major.
Okay, come on up, Mr. Monta-Major.
Mayor, how long are the public, how long a public comment going to be?
Two minutes.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, one is there on the screen. City manager and staff. Yeah, most of the time, I just follow up from the ones who's doing invocation. I like the invocation today also. And then I always follow up with the presentation. Yes, IT is very important. We talked about this group last time, and they are doing their best. In other words, like now, if you don't have informational, information technology, science, then it's hard to cope up to the, to the current world. Thank you. And yeah, the National Suicide Prevention Week, I will mention the word psychology. It's very hard. I know we should be, we should be aware, we should be thinking about others. The word psychology is needed sometimes to help. And the national preparedness, yeah, the scouts, good scouts, fire departments are always ready, response time. Yeah, you always have, they conduct also the drill on the fire department sometimes before seated by Tony Shartup. Good job. And yeah, we're good in Milpitas. With this, three presentations, we're really proud of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monta-Major. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda?
I have no additional public speaker cards, but I'd like to take this time to ask if there's anyone on Zoom that would like to address the City Council. I have no hands raised on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so now moving on to the announcements of conflict of interest and campaign contributions. We have our acting city attorney, Creach.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked the mayor and each member of the City Council whether he or she is in financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barba Diou.
I have none.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lem.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
None.
I further ask the mayor and each member of the Milpita City Council to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or contributions received from development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barba Diou.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lem.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
None.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect, no reported conflicts. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. And now moving on to the City Code of Conduct. Is there anyone that would like to recite it? If not, I can do it. Okay, I don't see anyone. All right, so we, we have City Council Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous. Words, tone, and body language do matter. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Phrase publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the console dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. And now moving on to the approval of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make any changes? If not, let's here, call for a motion in a second. We have Vice Mayor.
Move the approved agenda.
Second.
And we, so it was moved by Vice Mayor Barba Diou and seconded by Councilmember Leanne. So let's call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barba Diou.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lem.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm an aye. Okay, so now moving on to the consent calendar. And just staff have any comments? And if not, we will ask the, oh, actually, I got, I need to call for public comment.
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments on their consent calendar?
I would also ask if anyone on Zoom would like to speak on the consent calendar, to raise their hands now. I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. If not, I'm going to ask the council, do you have any items that you want removed from the consent calendar? Or if not, make a motion in a second.
Motion to approve the consent calendars.
Councilmember Lem.
Yes, I'd like to pull C13 for discussion.
Is that 13? Can you tell me what the item is?
Yeah, authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with one day installation, repair, incorporate for police department locker room renovation.
Okay, thank you. So we pulled item C13. I would like to pull item, if I don't see anyone else, I would like to pull item C9. And that one is waive the second reading and adopt a ordinance approving zoning text and zoning map amendment. So that one, I just want to, I just want to make sure that, well, I just, I'm going to So, that one, I just want to make sure that, well, I just, I'm going to pull it, and I'll explain it later. All right, with that, call for a motion in a second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar except for C9 and C13.
Second.
Okay, so it was, the consent calendar was moved by Councilmember Lynn and seconded by Vice Mayor Barba Díaz. We'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barba Díaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Thank you. And so, now, we will be moving on to the Leadership and Support Services. So, City Manager?
The first item under this section is for the council to consider modifying the City Council Code of Conduct regarding electronic device use at the dais. So, we have Matt Cano, Assistant City Manager, is going to provide a presentation as well as our City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is to consider an update to the City Council Code of Conduct on device use at the dais. The current policy, right now, the language is refrain from using electronic devices while on the dais, and there is a proposed change to allow appropriate use of electronic devices during meetings. As a background, the handbook was formally adopted as part of the City Council Procedures, or the Code of Conduct was formally adopted as part of the City Council Procedures and Protocols Handbook, which underwent a substantial overhaul beginning in 2018 and culminating its adoption on January 11, 2022. The handbook, including the Code of Conduct, is designed to be updated as needed to reflect changes in law or council direction with subsequent revisions approved in February and June 2023 and further updates in 2024. The Code of Conduct is included in every council meeting agenda and is read aloud at all City Council meetings to reinforce its importance and visibility to both council members and the public. In March 2025, Councilmember Lamb suggested revising the language to focus on appropriate use rather than no use. The council gave consensus to bring the matter forward for consideration. Some key considerations when you are making this decision are the public use and public focus and transparency. The purpose of this policy is to maintain focus on the public meeting and reassure the community that council business is being conducted openly. The Brown Act requires that all council discussions and decisions happen in public. If a council member is using a device during deliberations, it could give the impression that decisions are being shaped by private, real-time communications rather than discussion happening in the chamber. Further consideration needs to be the Public Records Act. The City of San Jose v. Superior Court established that messages about city business, even on personal devices, are considered public records. And then, the operational benefits. As you all know, we already use electronic devices at the dais in order to access agendas, staff reports, and other materials in real time. Device access allows for quick reference checks and the ability to respond to urgent situations or emergencies. For your consideration, we're presenting the two options. One, to keep the current language, refrain from using electronic devices while on the dais, or two, to revise the language to say use electronic devices appropriately while on the council dais. Thank you very much, and I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, City Clerk Guzzetta. Are there any questions from the, do I need to open it to the public first?
We do need to take public comment at any point of time.
Okay, public comment.
I think the dice is your side. Sometimes you need to check on whatever device that you got, because sometimes you cannot, like, sometimes I do it while sitting there. I use my phone also, but we're not on the dice. So, I think it's just fair, as long as there's no disruption. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Is there anyone else from the public?
I'll take this opportunity to ask if anyone on Zoom would like to address the City Council, to please raise their hands now. I have no hands raised on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, now, moving on to our City Council for comments. We have Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. So, are we going over each line or just focus on refraining using the electronic device?
This is just for the use of electronic devices in the Code of Conduct.
Okay. Then, no, I'm fine. Thank you.
So, I have a question. Does that, so electronic devices are cell phones, laptops, iPads? Is there anything else that I'm missing? Right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Correct. It's meant to be an encompassing term. So, it could include computers, it could include any kind of future electronic devices. It's meant to be a broadly applicable term.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just want to remind folks that, yeah, if someone from the audience or someone on TV land sees us on our cell phones, they can ask for a Public Request Act, and we have to show what was communicated. William, since you were the one that pulled this, I'd like to hear from you.
Yes, most of us use electronic devices on the dais, so that's why I bring this up. Instead of reframing all of us of using it, I like the new language. Use electronic devices appropriately while on the council dais. That would be more appropriate in today's world. Most of us use either the tablets or the laptops to check out items which is on the agendas. As long as we use appropriately, I think it's better than refrain all of us from using it.
Right. And that includes iPads or laptops?
Yeah.
Okay. And just for the record, I have witnessed some of our colleagues that are in selling items while on the council, and I think that was really inappropriate. So, I'm glad this came up. We need to keep people in check, because we're here to do the people's business. So, anyway. All right, so what's the next step? I guess I need a motion in a second.
Mayor, one thing we would need for a motion is there were two different options presented. The do not revise the current language or revise the current language to the proposed appropriate language. So, if someone wants to make a motion directing one of those choices, it would be important.
Since Councilmember Lamb, since you were the one that, let's have your motion.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to change the Code of Conduct language for the electronic devices to state as use electronic devices appropriately while on the council dais.
There's a second.
Second.
Okay, so it was, it was motion by Councilmember Lamb and seconded by Vice Mayor Barba Díaz. So, we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barba Díaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. All right, thank you. Now, moving on, City Manager, item 17.
The next item is to provide direction on City Council salaries in accordance with California Government Code, and we have Assistant City Manager Matt Cano providing a presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Santana. So, Assistant City Manager Matt Cano, and as City Manager mentioned, I have a brief presentation for you this evening. So, next slide, please. As some background, and I'll go through this quickly, the City Council several years ago, that's July 2010, actually, voted to reduce salaries by 6% due to the economy. Then, back in 2012, did a further reduction of 10%. And then, in 2014, did a slight restoration. It's just a little history of the salaries for the City Council, and the salaries have pretty much stayed the same since that December 2, 2014. On January 21, 2025, we came to the City Council to talk about a recent law that passed at the state that allows an increase to the current salaries that the mayor and City Council make. And it's just, and I'll get to that in a moment, but as some background, the mayor's, the position of mayor currently makes a salary of $13,569 per year, and the City Council at $10,852.44 per year. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, last year, on January 1, 2024, California Government Code changed, allowing increases based on population and based on Milpita's population, the mayor and City Council has a base salary. So, when I say the City Council as a whole, that includes a position of mayor and can make $1,900 per month or $22,800 per year, as that equates to. In addition to that base salary that all the City Council members, including the mayor, can make, the mayor is allowed, the position of mayor is allowed to have an allowance on top of that base salary, and there's no defined limit, there's no defined limit on what that amount could be in the code. For the City Council, again, that base salary that all five members could make, any increase that is approved wouldn't take effect until after the next election, until one new member, at least one new member is seated, and so that would be after November 2026. For the position of mayor, any allowance that's on top of the council salary that is approved could take effect immediately, or it could wait until after November 2026. Next slide, please. We included some options, or several options, of course, for the City Council to discuss and choose from, and we included five of those in the report, and the screen shows those in summary. Option A at the top sets everybody at the maximum salary allowed per the new Government Code, which equates to $22,800 per year. In addition, we have a table in the Agenda Report that shares what the other jurisdictions in Santa Clara County pay to their mayor and City Council. Some are charter cities that are governed differently and don't have to follow this particular portion of the Government Code. The others are non-charter cities. But on average, excluding Milpita, Monteserrano, and San Jose, you can see item B has what the averages are there. There's another option where we could just provide a catch-up, basically 3% per year since December 2014. There's a variable approach, so item D is basically very similar to item A, which sets everybody at the same base salary of $22,800 per year, but provides an extra increment of $5,000 to the position of mayor, recognizing the extra responsibilities there. And then, item E would be a 3% cost of living increase. The far right-hand column shows the annual general fund impact of these alternatives. Next slide, please. Next step, and it's in council feedback. So, today, we are here to receive any feedback or direction that you have. We would then, if there is direction to make a change, we would return at a future council meeting with the actual copy of the ordinance for you to enact to make that change. But the important topics to understand from you today and to hear back from you are, you know, what if any of the approaches on the prior slide would council like for staff to bring back in a draft ordinance? That's the first bullet. The second bullet is the maximum salary of $22,800 could be increased annually in amount equal to inflation based on the California Consumer Price Index since January 1, 2024. If choosing the maximum of $22,800, would you like us to include the CPI increase on top of that? That's about between 3 and 4% per year, the past year or two. And if the City Council prefers for the mayor to receive a higher increment, what should that be? And should that increment be provided immediately or wait until after the November 2026 municipal election? So, that concludes my presentation, and these are the three questions we would appreciate your feedback on this evening, which would allow us to bring back an ordinance for you to consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt Cano, Assistant City Manager. So, now, we'll go to the public for comment on this item. Is there anyone from the public? We have Mr. Montemayor.
Thank you, Voltaire Montemayor, Milpita. Yeah, I've seen a few years, but I couldn't remember them all. But this last page, the second one, I think at least the CCPI is there, and that will be the controlling portion. Going back to the increase, I think you really deserve, for me, it's more than that. It's not only that you're doing great, great here, but you are working hard, your homework, all the issues, the details. I know you may not be agreeing within you, the council, but it's showing that you are really speaking for the people of Milpita. So, for me, I don't know, it's just, if we have the budget, then that's fair. I think the Finance Department or whatever, yeah, I think the figure is good for you guys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Is there anyone else from the public?
I have no additional public speaker cards. I'll take this time to ask if anyone on Zoom would like to address the City Council on this item. If so, please raise your hand. I have no hands raised on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. So, now, moving on to council discussion on this item. Anyone from, any of my colleagues? I would like to say something. You know, we are considered city employees. We haven't had a raise in quite a while. I know this is community service, we are public servants, but I just wanted to kind of set the stage for the conversation, because we have, we do, it's more than a 40-hour work week, and I will tell you, because even reading your emails, and I know you all read your emails all the time, and it takes, I would say, maybe a couple hours a day. So, it does, even sometimes I even get behind. If I miss one day, it's, I get bombarded. So, yeah, it's a lot of work. But we're, you know, it's a labor of love, because we care for our community. So, I just wanted to put, set the stage to have that conversation. Okay, we have Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with you that this is a labor of love, but since the city is dealing with a deficit, I just feel that we can defer this until we see a better, brighter surplus before we give ourselves a raise. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else? But just a friendly reminder that we are in a structural deficit, we know that, but for the next two years, it's balanced, but after that, I think it's 2027?
27, 28.
So, that is, we still have a high deficit, so that's going to mean we're going to have to wait like five years out before you can get a raise. So, anyway, go ahead, Councilmember, I mean, Vice Mayor Barba Díaz.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my thoughts on this is not about getting a raise. It is a reaction on the current law that allows increase for compensation of public servants' rights. Another point is this does not apply to this council cycle. This is a policy consideration for whatever it's worth, hopefully to encourage people to participate in public governance later on, as this, if this passes, it will take effect after the election, the next election in 2026. So, this is not something that is self-appropriated by this council. This is a policy consideration, again, on my one thought, is a policy consideration to encourage public participation in city affairs. I just realized I'm being paid $900 a month. I just realized I'm being paid $900 a month, and that is not even a pay. It is something that, you know, as a, some sort of a stipend, if I will, consider that, not for my bills, not for my living expenses, but it's just as something like a token that defrays some cause of being a council member. For the public's information, not only that we are here twice a month for council meetings, we do have obligations outside of the city. Each of us holds some commission, being members of the board, like the VTA, the SVC, the Santa Clara Water, and also, in addition, we do have, we, each of us are liaison to other different commissions in the city. So it's not something that the city pays. It's a token. I consider that. And going back to today's consideration, it's not for us. It's for the future, you know, member of the community that would take that extra step for the betterment of the city. That's, that's how I see this policy consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Lam? Councilmember Lam?
I agree both the mayor and the vice mayor. I got on this job, it's not because it's paid for $900 a month, it's because I want to do some good for the city. But at the same time, I, you know, it consumes many hours of my times as well. It's, you know, people think, oh, we just go to a council meeting two times a month for a few hours. No, it's not like that at all. We have to understand the issues. Like Mayor was saying, just answering email consume a few hours a day, replying email another few hours a day. It's close to a full-time positions. But as the vice mayor comment was right, is this $900 a month is just a token for the, for the love of the city. So, you know, definitely I'd like this amount to be increased so for the future resident of Milpitas would give them more incentive to get into the office and do some good for the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. And I also wanted to mention that, being the mayor, I have a lot more responsibilities because I am the, I represent the city. I do go to places like Burlingame, sometimes San Francisco, and it does take a lot of gas. So, and then gas went up. So it's not like, and then I, I do have, if you look at my, my, what is it called? My duties online, and you'll see that I have a lot of other duties that I, that I have to go to. It's not like I can just not go to them. It's because I represent the city and I have to fulfill my duties as, as the mayor being there. And then I get invited to a lot of places, and people respect that. They respect that, you know, the mayor, the face of the city, you're there representing the city, and it, it does mean a lot. But yes, I just wanted to also bring, bring that up, that it should be, it should be, you know, a little more than the council members. Because from my understanding, the mayor makes $100 more than the city council members. That's what I was told. But when you put down 13, yes, it's supposed to be $100 more a month than the council members. But anyway, aside from that, yeah, is there any other comments? Are now we supposed to select one of these here?
Yes, it's at your, yes, it's at your discretion, of course. You can select one, but, so my first question, if someone's making a motion, is what if any of the, of the options on the proceeding table council would like us to consider?
Yeah.
Maybe that's the first question.
And this is, and you was, this is- Mayor, Councilmember Chua also would like to address-
Oh, Councilmember Chua, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I see the point of everybody, you know, Councilmember Lynn, Vice Mayor Barbara DiO, the mayor, and, and also Councilmember Lam. Like everybody else, when I first got on this, this is actually volunteer work, to be honest. And I, and I see, like the mayor said, there's a lot of commitment. And we go to, not only going to the different commissions and responsibilities, but also we go to, to events that we have to pay out of pocket because, because that's, you have to be there to represent the city. And one of the other things that is important, and Vice Mayor pointed this out, is this is not effective immediately for this council. This is all, this is for the council. If we have, if we do something about this, it will be effective in 1/1/27. One of the things that I asked our constituents, our residents, I said, why don't you, I asked them, I said, why don't you get involved? Get into governance, be part of the, you know, run for a position. And one of the biggest things that they, they respond, the response is, is just too much commitment and also there's no pay. And we tap on their own personal budget. So if you can see, most of the people that serves, especially in cities like Milpitas, any general law city, chartered city, they can, they can change their, their compensation. But mostly general law cities based on the state, based on the population. So, so I think, hopefully, we can get more participation, involvement from, from our residents if we make this not a burden to them financially. That's how I view it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua. As I was mentioning earlier, or alluding to, to this conversation, so in, so I serve on Bosque Bay Area Water Services Conservation Agency, and this is, I drive all the way to Burlingame to our meetings. We just had, we get a stipend of $100 a meeting. We meet every two months. And we had, we had just, one of the, one of the board members wanted to get a raise because, you know, it's, wanted us to have a raise because of the mileage. So we just gave ourselves a raise of $200 for every, every meeting that we have six times a year. So again, it's, it, the same arguments as the gasoline, the cost of living, everything has gone up. So just wanted to bring that, just also put that out there. That's, that it's not, it's not just us, but it's also for future board members, or future city council members. Or as Vice Mayor was mentioning it, it's not about just this council, it's about the future, future generations of council members and mayors, so. And, but, oh yeah, the other thing about Bosque, so there were a couple of board members that did not want a raise. So there was a stipend, or not a stipend, what do you call it? A stipulation that if the ones that didn't want a raise, they didn't, they didn't have to get a raise. They could opt out. So, yeah, so they did. So that it was passed, that people got raised, but the ones that said no, then they didn't get a raise. So just wanted to put that out there. All right, so you want us to go ahead and vote?
Sure, Mayor. And if City Clerk Guzzetta wouldn't mind putting the PowerPoint slide back up, showing the table of options.
Oh, and that was the wrong word, but raise. What was the compensation? What did you say? Token. Token. Okay. Anyway, we have Councilmember Lam.
Yeah, by looking at the odd choices, I like option D, except I like to make a little modification for the mayor. The 27.5, if I divide by 12, it's not a whole number, it's $2,291.66. I like to make that an even number. So instead of 27.5, I like to make it 27.6. So it's a 2300 even per month for the mayor.
Is that, is that?
Yeah. Okay. As, yeah, as explained, you can set the mayor's salary at any, at any rate, as long as it's approved by the council.
Do we need a consensus or?
Could I ask for a clar-
You would, as part of the motion, you would state that. If you're recommending item D, it sounds like that's what, that you're wanting to advance, you would state in the motion that you would, will like to approve the variable approach, allowing for a differential between the mayor and council, but the mayor's salary to be set at $27,600 per year.
Okay. And Councilmember Lam, if I don't, if-
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
If I could ask for two other additional clarifications on your motion. Number one is, would you like the, the salaries to include the Consumer Price Index increase, which is allowable, which, which would be between 3 and 4% additional? That's question one. And question number two is, would you like the additional increment that the mayor's receiving to be available essentially right away or after the next municipal election? So the Consumer Price Index, and then the timing for the mayor's increment.
I'd like to include the Consumer Price Index, and as far as the choices for when the mayor starts, I would like to give that choice to the mayor.
Okay. So any, any other discussion? We have a vice, Vice Mayor?
I would second Councilmembers Lam's anticipated motion with a suggestion that we make the increase for the mayor effectively, effective immediately. If that is something that you would consider, I'll second that.
Yeah, I'd like to leave it to the mayor.
Yeah. Mayor? We have Councilmember Chua. So we can't see your hand.
I know. It's hard. I, I, I would second the motion of Councilmember Lam, but not the compensation of the mayor to be effective immediately. I want that to be effective on 1/1/27, the same time as the rest of the council, if that's, if that's okay with the... Did you make a motion, Councilmember Lam?
No, I haven't.
Okay. That's where I stand.
Yeah, the, the only thing I leave it to, to mayor is the when the starting salary for the mayor.
That's where I stand on that. The, the, the D. The same time as the, the rest of the council, and also the question number two, yes, CPI, it's yearly CPI. That's where I go.
Okay, anyone else? Anything else to say? Any more discussion on this item? Okay. So you want item, option D?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the modification of, instead of 27.5, 27.6 instead.
Okay.
And can I clarify whether, oh, go ahead. Can I clarify whether the extra salary for the mayor, timing for the mayor's increment, is your motion to include that right away or to wait until after the next election?
It's just no preference for me, but since Councilmember, Councilmember Chua suggested or Councilmember start at the same time, I have no problem with that either.
No, and just so people probably wondering what are, what are my thoughts? I'm good with that. I mean, think, we've, we've, we've discussed this before.
Okay. In that case, I like to-
I was okay with it.
In, in that case, I made a motion. I'd like to make a motion to select variable approach with Councilmember getting 22,800 a month or 20, or 1,900 per month. For mayor is 27,600 a year or 2300 per month. And with, with consumer index increase every year, and all of us start this new salary after the next election, which is 2026, 2026 elections. Okay?
One point of clarification from the legal part, it wouldn't be a CPI increase every single year. That future increase, future salary increases cannot be approved prospectively. The clarification that the Assistant City Manager was asking about was, when this item comes back, because the state law allows for the maximum compensation to be increased by CPI from January 1, 2024, if the number we come forward with should be this 27,600 number and this 22,800 number adjusted for the CPI increase from January 1, 2024, until whatever date this item comes back to the council for consideration. That was the CPI issue.
You get that? I, I'm confused. Can you repeat that?
Sure. So state law will not allow for the council to approve future increases.
Okay.
However, the number that's presented on the screen is the maximum salary that the council can take as of January 1, 2024. But that number increases every year by CPI, so that the max, so if what council wanted to do was to increase the salary to the maximum amount possible for council members, you could adjust that, the staff, when we bring it back, could adjust that number upward by the CPI increase between point A and point B.
Okay. You, you were saying the CPI increase will be decided in the future meeting?
Yeah, it'll, it'll probably be somewhere between 3 and 6%, depending on when we come back.
No, that's fine.
I have a clarifying question, if you don't mind. So what's the difference between C and D?
There's different approaches. So D is just the maximum allowable, just without the CPI issue. So D is the maximum allowable for the city council, and then an extra increment for the mayor's position. C just took us, since the last time it changed in 2014, and added 3% per year. Just a slightly different approach.
And that starts in 2027 as well.
Yeah, that would have, if we took, if we went back to 2014 and added 3% every year to the mayor and council's salary, by this time, we would have been at $18,000 and change for the mayor and $14,500 for council. Just a different way of looking at it if-
Yeah, but they both start at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, anything you, anything we enact here will all start in Jan, roughly January 1, 2027.
27, 27. Okay. All right. Yeah, I, I will second your motion. Okay. Did you second it? Oh, never. We have, I think, I think, Councilmember Chua, did you have your hand raised?
No. No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So we have, Councilmember Lam has made the motion, and we have a second it by Vice Mayor Barbara DiO. So let's call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO?
I-
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Council, Mayor Montano?
And I'm aye.
Okay, thank you for that, everyone, and remember, just the public to know, this does not start till twenty-twenty-seven. Not now, but a couple more years from now. Okay, um, let's see, now we're done with that, let's, from items that were pulled on from the consent calendar, so we have item C from Councilmember Lamb. C thirteen, was it? C thirteen, and that one was, that's one, that one is authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with one day installation or, and repair or police department locker room renovation. Okay, go ahead and make your case.
Mayor, do you want to go first, yours is?
No, go ahead, you're.
Okay, thank you. For C thirteen, I have no problem of renovating the police woman's locker room. The only question I, I have for the staff is, how do you keep the schedule? Well, let me rephrase that, we don't have a schedule, by looking at the proposal, it appears there's some anticipation of complete date, February or March twenty-twenty-six. But at the same time, this is subject to appropriations of funds for a term of two, twenty and seventy days, which is nine months. So I don't see a fixed schedule, I assume, once this is approved, you guys will work with the contractor to come over the schedules. And I, my question is, how do you keep the schedule or keep the project complete? How do you keep track of the schedule so the project will complete on time? And also their contingency of hundred and ten, hundred and one thousand dollars, three hundred, three hundred ninety point seventy-five. So this amount as a contingency, and how do you keep the expenses under control, under six hundred thousand dollars without using contingency? Those are my questions.
I think Public Works Director Durenzo's online, if not, I can, I can answer those as well, but I'll turn to Christian first.
I'm available, yes, good evening. So a couple, a couple of things. The, the schedule, end of, end of February, end of March schedule is a schedule under the best of circumstances. That's a schedule that doesn't have any course corrections throughout, throughout the project, that doesn't have any delays on materials and supplies, for instance, both of which could throw the schedule off. We typically use two hundred and seventy days as an allowance. In the eventuality that once the project begins, we are told that parts are delayed by three months and, and as I mentioned to you this afternoon, Councilmember Lamb, this occurred with the elevator project that we were due to begin this week at the library, for instance. That has been delayed by six, six to eight weeks. So in the last year, we've experienced this on several projects, it's a, it's a real reality. And it's not a reality that we will be privy to until we actually begin the project. As, as contracts are executed and we issue a notice to proceed to the contractor, we have a project kickoff meeting, we begin to discuss terms and conditions, expectations, meeting frequencies, all of which enable us to stay on course with the, with the project. We have a dedicated project manager that will work every day, every week with the contractor. The, remember, this project is at the police station and that means the work is done after hours. So it's a little, it's a little unique for us, I'm not to say that it's going to lead to any delays of any, of any sort, but it is a, a unique wrinkle for us as opposed to any other project we would have. The contingency is standard contingency, we, you know, the minimum contingency is really ten percent when we have projects where we are a little uneasy about what we could experience once we break ground, if it's a waterline project like Dempsey, Dempsey has a million dollar contingency and it's a five million dollar project. We are about seventy-five to eighty percent complete with Dempsey Waterline Project and we have not touched a single dollar of contingency yet, so we're very pleased about that. We're hoping that's the case with, with this project as well, but again, we won't know until we are, we've begun the project. Change orders are reviewed meticulously, we don't, we don't just, just approve, approve those on the fly. We often deny change order requests from contractors, so we will do our due diligence to maintain and contain the costs.
How do, during the renovation time or renovation period, how would female officers, you do the close changes or like, is there another facility the officers can use to, as a backup or a current lockers or how, how do they, yeah, while the renovation, yeah, how can the female officers?
I don't know. Christian, I don't know if you have the answer to that, but Chief Hernandez is at the microphone as well, so.
Okay, I'll defer to him.
Good evening, Council, Jared Hernandez serving as your police chief. Yes, we have an alternate space, it's, it's very small, but it will serve the purpose during this construction project.
Okay. All right.
Is that, is that it, are you done, Councilmember Lamb?
Yeah, um, do, um, Christian, do you use any tools to keep track of the project, like how do, yeah, I know you just mentioned every week you guys keep, try to keep on top of the projects, do you use any software tools to manage that?
Sometimes, some project managers are pretty adept and will use Microsoft Project, for instance, if that is available to them. I'm not sure if our project manager will or intends to use that or will simply have a project schedule that is provided to him by the contractor that is then adhered to over the course of weekly meetings. Usually, at the end of a week, we will get progress reports from the contractor, everything that has been done up to that day and everything that is anticipated to occur the following week. And that'll, that enables us to really stay on course with it. Otherwise, in the absence of a software application like Microsoft Project, he would probably use an Excel spreadsheet of some sort, whatever he's, he's accustomed to using that will facilitate his PM activities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lamb. So we need to get public comment on this item before we take a vote on it?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Barbara Diouf was, wanted to speak?
Councilmember Monta Mayor, did you have a comment?
Well, there, Monta Mayor, Mel Pitas, yeah, I'm a living example, I work for a place, we need locker. I work in loading cars in the train, we need lockers for our boots. In the bowling lanes, we need locker for our balls. The school, the school, colleges and high school, maybe even elementary, they need lockers, it's good to have lockers. The need now though is sometimes it should be secured, spacious, and let's say, I'm going back to the feature. There's the reflecting of seven hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand, doesn't matter, it emphasizes the contingency. But if we add the five-nine-eight, six-zero-nine-point-two-five-to-one-zero-one, three-zero-seventy-five, it adds up to seven hundred thousand. So anyway, I'm just mentioning features, but the need, the really need to have a locker is very important. It's very, very important, thank you.
All right, thank you, anyone else from the public?
I have no additional public speaker cards, if you'd like to address this item from Zoom, please raise your hand from the public, otherwise, I have no Zoom public speakers, Mayor, but we do have Councilmember Chua with her hand raised.
Now, we have Council-
Thank you, City Clerk.
We have Councilmember Chua?
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to thank Chief Gerard and also Director Christian for taking on this project, I know this project has been on the books, it's budgeted, I think, for the last two years and finally you were doing it, thank you. And I just, through the course of this, of this session agenda, I realized that our female officers' number has increased and also the number of female, female employees over at the department of, our police department is now totaling up to forty-one female. Well, now they have, they, with this, after construction, they, they will have available, we have forty-one lockers for all of them, as I've been, that has been mentioned to me. Well, thank you both and thank you also to Assistant City Manager Matt Keno and also interim City Manager Deanna, thank you all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua. You brought up a good point, can, I'm going to ask Jared a question. So does, do those lockers also, are they for the community, community service officers as well?
Yes.
Okay.
It's forty-four lockers for forty-four female officers.
Oh, forty-four, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's great, oh, that's great, that's great, that's great, thank you, just a clarification. All right, so Councilmember Lamb, you made the, you, you had already made the motion, so we had a second by?
Oh, I just have one comment.
Oh, we have?
Yeah, briefly, I just for the public and, and community, you know, this has been presented to the council way back in twenty-three, twenty-four. And we have considered that as part of the capital improvement program at the time, fully budgeted and this is predicated by the fact that existing women's locker room equipped with only two stalls at the time and it didn't meet the department's female personnel. So the council acted, hopefully this project will expand shower and storage shortages, better accommodating the personnel of the workforce, including new locker systems designed to secure equipments and things. So that was the reason way back that this council has approved that and I'm glad to hear that with the increase of female personnel, the, this project is manifesting to be the right decision at the time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, okay, so let's, who seconded it?
Sorry, Mayor, we don't have a motion yet, but I think Councilmember Lamb wanted to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Lamb.
Okay, I'd like to go forward and prove this police, female, more police, females, locker room renovations project.
Second.
Okay, so it was motioned by Councilmember Lamb and seconded by Councilwoman Evelyn Chua, so we now call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara Diouf?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I'm an aye, thank you. Okay, and then, so C thirteen was done, so now, C nine is the one that I had pulled. And this one is in regards to the zoning, it's, it's waiving the second reading to adopt ordinance approving zoning text and zoning map amendment. So my question was, is, I guess I need some clarification, so does, is this zoning, since the last time it says that in June five, twenty-twenty-five, we had a proposed zoning text and map amendments, so do you have a, a map of the, the changes that are going to be made in the new zoning? And does, and does it, does it still give the city an option to where, even though we've made, there was, amendments have been done, but are we, I guess what I'm asking, are we tied down to those zoning changes or amendments?
Ask, Lillian Van Hoof from our planning team is on Zoom and ask her to address your question.
Hi, Mayor, Lillian Van Hoof, Principal Planner, Acting Director on, Planning Director Lee's absence. We also have Holly Pearson, our project manager for the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. But effectively, this, the proposed zoning map changes that are, that were proposed in, that were before you in earlier last month, are what, like those would be the final map changes at this time. So if a property owner wanted to change the zoning designation of their property, they would have to do so on, on their own. Does that answer your question?
Do you have a map to show us where exactly those zoning changes have occurred and do, and let's say there's a place where we do not want it to be zoned high density. Does the council still have the right not to have that high density there?
I, I think it would be helpful to clarify that for the zoning map changes, the, the bulk, the substance of the changes to the zoning map were made during Phase One, which was approved last summer. So that was the, the citywide review of the consistency between the general plan map and the zoning map and, and changing the zoning of a fairly large number of parcels, it was a few hundred, I believe. For Phase Two, which is before the council tonight, the, the changes to the zoning map are much more limited this time. So it, it consists of removing some of our obsolete overlay zones that are being eliminated from the, proposed to be eliminated from the zoning code. Obsolete because they're, they've, they've been since replaced with appropriate standards in base zones, so they just no longer serve the purpose that they were created for. And then the other change is, is adding, we have an existing freeway corridor overlay zone that allows for greater floor area ratio on parcels that are within three hundred feet of the major freeways in the city. That's been in our zoning ordinance, but it wasn't shown on the zoning map, so it's not new. It's, it's simply been, been added to the map so that people know that it exists. So other than the changes to the overlay zones, we aren't proposing to rezone any parcels in the city with this phase of the zoning update, I hope that makes sense.
Well, I guess the bottom line is, I just want to know if we still have the sovereignty to be able to say, oh, no, we don't want this built, even though it's zoned for this, we don't want this built. Say, for example, let's, let's say there's a commercial property that, there's a zone for a commercial property and we said, no, we, we don't want this built, so does that, this new ordinance, this new zoning, does that tie us down to say, no, you, since you already approved that zoning, it has to be commercial? That's, that's all I want to know, so yes or no? That's, that's all I want to know. So yes or no?
Leanne, do you want to answer or shall I?
I can answer that. So the, the city council, so, uh, based on what the development application is, so typically a brand new development, let's say it's a commercial, um, a new building on a commercial zone that would require a site development permit and that would go before the Planning Commission for their review, because they are the reviewing authority for that type of permit. And so they could choose to approve or deny said project. And of course, someone could then appeal that project for the council to review. And then the council would have the authority to make the final decision on that requested entitlement. So nothing in the zoning ordinance is, is taking away the, the council's purview to review.
The council maintains the right to establish the zoning in the city. And so at any point in time, as you've already gone through Phase One of approving the zoning maps, that's, this action is to incorporate those maps into the comprehensive zoning ordinance. If at any time you want to bring up for review or re-review of the zoning ordinance, you, the council always maintains the authority to evaluate the zoning and establish either confirm it or establish modifications to it.
Okay. So it doesn't tie us down?
No.
Okay. That's all I did.
But we've done, we've done Phase One and we're incorporating those maps into the comprehensive zoning ordinance. And so at any point in time, if you want to reevaluate, you, the council obviously will have the pleasure of doing that.
Okay. Thanks for answering your question. Thank you. We have Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this quick. I just have one basic question. I know Phase One is translating the, the zoning into the, into the general plan, right? That's, we did that, right? And then Space Two is cleaning up, you know, leaning, I mean, little things that needs to be addressed that was not, that were not clear in Phase One. My question is, was there any changes in the residential, commercial and industrial zoning on this particular Phase Two that you're asking us to approve?
Yes, there have been some changes.
And what are, they, go ahead.
Well, I think, if I could, I think it would be helpful just to back up one step and try to explain with a little bit more clarity, the distinction between Phase One and Phase Two. So Phase One was primarily about creating new zoning districts. As you recall, the BPRD, Business Park Research and Development, and the metro area zones, that was kind of seen as a higher priority and that was for general plan consistency. But those, those new zones needed to be created. However, there were still, in the second phase, which was the full comprehensive zoning ordinance update, there were still some changes needed for general plan consistency. They just didn't involve new zoning districts. So we have, for example, increased the, allowed floor area ratio in certain commercial zones and in, in the industrial zones. That was because the general plan allowed for floor area ratio of 1.0 in the industrial areas. But M1, M2 and MP, all three of our existing industrial zones. So in this phase of the zoning update, consistent with that general plan policy, we changed the floor area ratio, increased it in our residential zoning districts, proposed to 1.0.
You changed the floor area ratio, but not the zoning itself?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's all I wanted to make clear. No zoning changes, just the floor, floor area ratio.
Just the floor area ratio. And, and I, for the sake of being thorough, I mean, there were a few minor changes to certain development standards across the board, but it's so much detail, it's hard to.
I got it. I got it. Thank you, Holly. I think that, that answered my question clearly. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there, do you guys have a map of, of the, the conceptual zoning?
We do have, the zoning map is, it's the very, I believe it's the very last page of your, of the, the ordinance, the adopting ordinance. It's Exhibit, Exhibit One or Exhibit A of the, of the ordinance. I don't know if I can bring it up on my screen, but it's the very last page of the, yes, there we go. I don't know if we can zoom in.
And which areas are we planning to rezone?
So for this phase, the only map changes are removal of certain overlay zones. So that's not shown on this map because it was something eliminated rather than something added. And then the freeway corridor overlay is, is now mapped. That's the hatching, let's see, it's in the legend here, overlay, freeway corridor overlay. So, but it's, it's basically non-residential parcels within 300 feet of I, I 580, I'm sorry, I 880 and I 680. And other than that, we have not, we, we've converted the previous overlay zone for mobile home parks into a base zone. It really is, it's effectively the same. It's just now a base zone instead of an overlay zone. So it, it's, really there have been no changes made to the base zoning of any parcels in the city with this phase. It's, it's overlay changes.
Okay. So you know, a while back, we had those opportunity zones. How does that fit with this map? I mean, what's the difference?
Oh, the, the housing opportunity districts?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the housing opportunity districts were approved by separate actions, as you know. And those exact map changes have just been integrated into this map. So you can see now the town center, town center zones, there's TC 1, 2 and 3. And the NCMU zones 1, 2 and 3, they are now shown on this map along with the other citywide zoning. So that's not, there's no change from what the council previously approved for the HODs.
But, but those sites have been commercial to housing. So those that have, those have, sites have been rezoned, correct?
They, they were rezoned and yes, and now the zoning text is, is also being incorporated into the zoning ordinance. So it's, it's just bringing together the HOD approval with the comprehensive zoning update.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So is there, are there any more questions? And if not.
Mayor, we need to call for public comment.
Is there anyone from the public?
Mr. Montoya, I know you talk about, or you have discussed this carefully. And you didn't want to make mistake. I don't want to mention names among you, City Council. And it's like, if I'm right, we're trying to review the, is this what we talk about? And it says here, one, it says anyway, determine that environment. So you did your best. You were very careful. So it's a consistent calendar in a way. So we talk about it and we were careful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya. Is there anyone else from the public? Cards?
I have no public speaker cards. I'd like to take this time to ask if anyone on Zoom would like to raise their hand and address the council. There are no hands raised on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to accept a staff's recommendation to approve the C9.
Second.
Is it, all right. So now we'll call for the vote. Oh, excuse me. It was motioned by myself, Mayor, and it was seconded by Councilmember Chua. And now we'll call for the vote.
Mayor, before we go to that, we had Councilmember Lam with his hand raised.
You had your hand raised? Okay. I didn't see it. Sorry. Let's have Councilmember Lam. Thanks for.
This map and when Mayor asked a question, which area for the rezon, and then she was saying 300, yeah, from the 680 and 880, I'm, I'm not clear about her answer. Can you, can she repeat her answer again?
Yes. So on the zoning map for this, for Phase Two, for this action this evening, we have mapped the freeway corridor zone on the zoning map. It already existed in the code. So we didn't make any changes to it. We just mapped it on the, I don't, I see that it's in the, I see that.
Can you give examples?
Yeah. Um, I, this, um, I'm having a hard time seeing it on the screen. My apologies. I, I see in the legend, there's a, in the overlay section of the legend is, there's a hatched pattern, freeway corridor overlay. And.
So if you look at the map, you'll see like some hatching.
All right, there it is.
On either side of the freeway. Yeah. On both 880 and 680 corridors. So for example, like the, the McCarthy Ranch area, that's, uh, that's just west of I 880. So there's the hatching on top of the red, the red colored parcels.
It's a little hard to see on the screen. And it, it's, as I mentioned, it's all non-residentially zoned parcels that have this freeway corridor overlay. So it's not all the part, the residentially zoned parcels don't have it. That's why you don't see it over the, so the yellow color, those are residential parcels. So, but yeah, when you zoom in, it's easier to see. It, it applies to parcels on either side of the freeways that are non-residential.
And Holly, can you explain the, what the hatching means regarding the floor area ratio?
Yes. It, so the freeway corridors, freeway border overlay applied to those parcels allows for additional floor area ratio. I, I have to look at the exact text of that, of that overlay. I can actually read it to you and what it actually allows. It allows for greater floor area ratio, but I want to tell you, since it's a point of interest, exactly what it, it allows. Okay. So there's an increase of up to 20% above the base zones maximum floor area ratio may be allowed, subject to the review authority's discretion. So it's not automatically a 20% increase in floor area ratio, but a, a project applicant can request up to 20% increase. So if the base zone allows floor area ratio of 2.0, a project applicant can say, we'd like to add another, an additional, you know, bring it up to 2.4. And the review authority can approve or, or modify or deny its discretionary.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify the legal effect, in 2014, the city council created the freeway overlay district, set up the boundaries, set up where it would be, but at that time did not adopt a map amendment. So it'd be depicted in the city's zoning map. What staff is doing now is merely depicting it in the zoning map, consistent with what the council previously approved. The standards for that overlay zone are not changing in any way, shape or form.
Thank you. You done? Oh, thank you. Okay. Now, anyone else? All right. Let's call. We have a motion and then. Go ahead. We have, we have.
Mayor, we already have a motion and second.
Call for the.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. Okay. I think that's the last item. So call on staff for anything, any, anything you have.
I'll go first. I have to find my. Do you want me to go or?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Go ahead. Sorry. I was looking for my document. I was looking for my document. I just want to announce that the Community Cars and Coffee with a Cop is taking place on Saturday, September 13th, from 8 to 11 a.m. with a location to be determined. The Police Department is also offering a community meeting the evening of September 15th with details posted on the city's website. The next cleanup event is scheduled for Saturday, September 6th at Dixon-Landing Road from, I'm sorry, Dixon-Landing Park from 9 to noon. And I just want to also mention that the Melpitas Fiesta Special Event will be held on October 11th at the Delano Monags Park. I'm sure I got that wrong, from 4 to 6. And the last item I wanted to raise was that as the council has recently held its workshop on July 1st on governance, as well as reviewed the code of conduct this evening, one of the missing components has been the censure policy. It's an outdated policy. It dates back to 2017. And we have began to, we've begun to review it and we're going to be bringing that back to council, likely at the October 3rd priority session, just so that the council can review it. It's dated. There's been a lot of changes and it, it needs a refresh.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor?
We have Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to thank, I just want to thank Persistent Technology for donating 20 laptops to the city. I want to also thank Ms., Ms. Orkyoko. I, I hope I'm saying it correctly, Bianca Orkyoko, for reaching out to me and, and making this happen, the donation. Special thanks to Julie and Director Renee for making this possible. And I would like to invite the residents tomorrow, Wednesday at 4:30. There's an official donation, I mean, donation ceremony, if you will, at this teen center or senior center. Thank you. Thank you all so much for making this happen. And the laptop goes to our programs. Thank you, Persistent Technology. And the second one, His Holiness Pope Paul XIV appointed our very own Father and Eligot of St. Elizabeth Church to auxiliary bishop. Bishop-elect Andy is, is the first auxiliary bishop appointed in a long time in our San Jose diocese. He will be, he's also one of the six auxiliary Filipino-American auxiliary bishops in the entire United States. So congratulations to Bishop-elect Father Andy. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua. What, what day did you say about the, the lap?
Tomorrow.
iPads or laptops? It's tomorrow?
Tomorrow at 4:30 at this teen, teen center or senior center.
Okay. I'll try to be there.
That would be nice.
Okay. Anyone else have any? I, I have one that, and this is the second time people have brought this up to me. And I've already brought it up with the city manager about the, the the overabundance of air flights in our city. People have been complaining to me. This is a, I think the third person. Last, last year someone did, and I just kept forgetting to ask to, to bring it up to our city manager. But again, this time I got an email and they're complaining about the noise. We've never had so many jets and private airplanes over Melpita. So, so I'd like staff to look into that and what's going on. Because there was a time when, I guess there was, I don't remember so many, you know, and I, and when I look up, I said, wow, there is a lot of planes up in the sky. So maybe I'd like staff to look into it and explain. And city manager, you have some?
Yeah. I'd, I'd just like to provide some information to the council. The, the flight paths utilized by SFO Oakland, as well as San Jose and the Samatay Airport are. are under the authority of the FAA at the federal level. And so this, the community has very little influence or control to inform flight paths. When I was in Sunnyvale, we worked very hard on this. I'll have to see if there's still a working group. I've not seen anything announcing whether there's a working group. But during the time that I was city manager in Sunnyvale, we were, we met with the FAA, we worked with them. It is very difficult to get them to change the flight path. So I just want to manage expectations in terms of what we can do. Because I, the most I would be able to do is see if the, if the group is still active. And I believe at the time, Milpitas was invited to participate, they declined. And so I, I need to see if that's still active. Other than that, this is an FAA federal issue for which we do not have a lot of influence.
So did Sunnyvale, were they, what, what were they, how were they involved? I mean, what did they want? What did the, what did the city of Sunnyvale want? Did they want to move the air flights somewhere else, or did they?
Mayor? Yeah, Mayor, just for Brown Act compliance purposes, I think what might be necessary is for further discussion to have the city manager report facts.
My goal is to just advise the council, this is not our, our purview in terms of.
Yeah, but I'd, but I'd like to look, at least look into it.
Then I'll call for consensus on this. Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. And this is just, just for transparency, that's, that's all it is. Because the constituents are the ones that ask me. It's not like something that, okay? All right. And anyone else? If not, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Former city attorney. Okay, where is that at? There's a, I think you have a script for me. So before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of our city attorney, Michael Mutila Pasi. Michael successfully led our city through numerous complex legal challenges, ensuring outcomes that strengthen our commitment to ethical governance and compliance with the law. His hallmark was unbiased legal advice, and his contributions will never be forgotten. Michael was deeply committed to public service. He believed in our city's potential and gave his all, commuting from the coast each day, working tirelessly through illness to support our growth and development. He is survived by his beloved wife, Rachel, and his son, Lear. Our hearts are with them during this difficult time. So please join me in a moment of silence as we honor Michael's life and legacy to our city of Milpitas. Thank you, Michael, for everything. Meeting is adjourned.